I am called in this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone this evening. The first item on the agenda requiring action is proclamations. And since the Copper Country Cruisers Car Club will be celebrating their 25th anniversary on June 20, August, on 20th August 2016, the Town would like to acknowledge this. Would Cruz Bastillo's president of the Copper Country Cruisers Car Club please come forward to receive the proclamation?
Whereas the Copper Country Cruisers Car Club was established in August of 1991 in Grand County, New Mexico, and whereas the club membership have given many hours of their time to promote the restoration of vehicles to their original status or modified and creating street rods, and whereas the club has raised funds to support local organizations, Cloe the Needie Child, the El Refugio Center, the Shop for the Cop, the Firstborn Program, and has provided scholarships to graduating seniors from area high schools, and whereas the Copper Country Cruisers Club will be celebrating its 25th anniversary on August 20, 2016, after 25 years of promoting safety, friendship, and fun. Now therefore, I can let Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim August 20, 2016 as Copper Country Cruisers Day. In recognition of its 25th anniversary and encourage and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the Copper Country Cruisers Car Show on Saturday, August 20th, 2016.
Congratulations. Mr. Bastillo, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you. I am Cruz Bastillo, the current president of the Copper Country Cruisers. Have a few members here today. We have John Patowski, Sammy and Ron, Andy Marie and Dave. Some of those members couldn't come because they're tied up with other business. But I want to thank you, Mayor Latner, the council members and staff for this proclamation. We look forward to seeing you all Saturday, the 20th at our car show in Gulf Park. Whereas right now, we're going to have a previous showing vehicles, which we knew the difference could be bigger this year, I think. Every year the cars get better, nicer looking, and good opportunities to go down there and get some ideas on how to capture vehicles in there. We've been existence, like Mayor said, 25 years now. A lot of work goes into it. We start our car show agendas around February timeframe. This year, I think we started like in November to try to get ready for this year's 25th anniversary. But I thank you very much. I thank the city for allowing us to use Gulf Park facilities and letting us use the area for our car show, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Latner. Appreciate it.
Take it very well. The next item on the agenda requiring action is public input. I see there are four people who signed up for input. I would just like to remind each of you that you'll have five minutes to speak, and if it looks like you're going to go over that a little bit, I'll interrupt you and let you know how many seconds you have left. Okay? First on the list is Cruz Bastillo.
If you like it, I don't have any other things to say. Just thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Sue Shirovitz.
Hello. Hi. My name is Sue Shirovitz, and what? Sorry. Oh, the button. Sorry. Okay. Hi. My name is Sue Shirovitz, and thanks for listening to me. I've lived in Silver City for 32 years, and of those 32 years, 23 have been in the Indian Hills subdivision. That's where I walk my dog every morning in my neighborhood, and it's a great way for me to start my day before I go to work. It's nice and peaceful. I get to listen to the birds. I look at the deer and the rabbits, and I admire the mountains, the Gomez Peak, Bear Mountain. And then I come around a corner in my neighborhood, and there's a billboard. The billboard is in a residential neighborhood. It is a permanent structure, and it is huge. It's approximately 20 feet long, and it is 22 feet from the ground to the top of the sign. And the sign on the billboard right now is 16 feet long and 8 feet high. There's actually two billboard structures on this piece of land, and one is smaller than the other, and that one doesn't have a sign, but there are two billboard structures. And I know that there have been two previous attempts to have these structures taken down, but since they're still there, I assume there must be a reason why, and that's why I'm here today. According to the Silver City Code of Ordinances, for signs, section 5.15, and specifically 5.15.4, residential zoning, freestanding signs are permitted, but they're not to exceed 24 square feet and 8 feet in height. This is a billboard, and it is higher than 8 feet, and it exceeds, the sign on it exceeds 24 square feet. That sign is 128 square feet. Also on this sign is a political statement. Now according to another section, this is 5.15.7, a sign that publicizes an election may be erected for a period of 60 days prior to the event. In this case, it's the November 8th election, which is 90 days away. Not 60, but 90. I called the code enforcement people on Monday, yesterday, about this matter, and I was told that someone else had actually submitted a formal complaint about the billboard, and it was being processed. I was also told that there was no time period that election signs had to adhere to. And if that is truly correct, then there should be an amendment to the 5.15.7 saying it's supposed to be 60 days out. That's really secondary to why I'm here. I am here because of the billboard, and I think it's time for it to be taken down, both of them to be taken down. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
See you back.
Next on the list is Denise Smith.
I'm sorry I crossed it on because I hardly need to be talking during the public hearing. Thank you.
Next on the list is Stephen Lyle. Well, that's not Stephen. How do you spell your first name?
Sherry. I'm told it looks like Sam Street.
Oh, okay.
In practice, you get it. Just really quickly, I wanted to bring up the intersection of Bullard and Broadway and thank whoever turned the stoplights off for a while and put the stop signs out. It makes a huge difference. I speak for Daniel Ann Wish and Men's Need a Ridge. Business is right there at the corner. We love the stop signs. We noticed that the traffic is calm, the drivers are calm, they're courteous to pedestrians and drivers, they're awaiting their turn. I'm not getting the cars racing down Sola Hill to beat the light or from Broadway. My window is like 30 foot of glass, and I watch what goes on, and it's a floor show every day, pedestrians being nearly missed as people are trying to beat the light and make the left turns. So the stop signs have been really great, and I was given permission to mention that we had spoken to Alex, Men's Need a Ridge and Daniel Ann Wish, we've spoken to Alex and to, I'm sorry, lovely lady helper, Rhonda, almost last year, I think, before the bridge went down, or right about the time the bridge went down, because I was hoping we'd get stop signs while that was going on, and there were rules against it. Anyway, I want to point out how much we love it and some of the other businesses, and if you get on Facebook and look at Buck Burns or Silver City Haps, you'll see an extensive conversation about it, and it was almost unanimously positive toward the stop signs downtown. I know it's not on the agenda today, but I wanted to lob it out there and hope that it becomes a discussion. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm by surprise there. I want to echo what the lady just said right now about the stop signs. I'm a big advocate to keep the stop signs there, and I've mentioned this before, and I hope Mr. Brown and Mr. Latner and the rest of the Town people will implement it and hold them there forever, if that's okay with the people. Sometimes we get, and I like it, and I know the rest of the Town council likes it, we get a feedback on emails, and sometimes they're good and sometimes they're bad. We have to take them into consideration when they come from the people, and we do. So don't get mad at us if we don't respond to your emails. We don't want to get in trouble. We don't want to get another council involved in that. We like it, and keep on emailing us, and hopefully that things will turn out for the best for everybody. We have to have patience, just like you have to have patience with us also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have been receiving a lot of comments about the stop sign versus stoplight idea, and I would have to say that about 98% of them are in favor of stop signs, so hopefully we'll continue to discuss that. I also just wanted to say I recently attended the Lulac 8003 Scholarship Awards Dinner that was held on Saturday, and I just wanted to congratulate again the nine recipients of scholarships. Those are some incredible young people who are going to do a lot for our community, so it was really great to be in their presence while they received their awards. And the last thing is that at the next, I won't be in attendance at the next meeting. I may call in, that hasn't been figured out. It's because I will be at New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department's 38th Annual New Mexico Conference on Aging. I'm looking forward to learning a lot about our senior populations and how we can and work together for the community to build some new stuff for seniors.
Thank you. Councilor Connor? Councilor Amin Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as a senior, I want to thank you for doing that, Councilor Connor. Since the subject is that, thank you, Councilor Ray and Councilor Connor. I received myself about 25 comments on email, voice messages, and other, you know, input about the stop signs, and three of those wanted the stoplight, the others wanted the stop sign. So there seems to be, you know, an opportunity for public comment. However, that probably will be under the purview of the chief of the town manager. I have a couple of short announcements and one fairly long one, so bear with me. The Art and the Crosswalk Pilot Project, which our town manager has approved as going forward, and that means that the Silver City Artist Association and I will be looking at two crosswalks in town to do art in. I want to thank the Community Development Department for loaning me a book on traffic calming, which is an excellent resource and talks about how breaking up the visual field in a long road is really one way to calm traffic. We probably won't be seeing any art actually until the fall because the town really has to, their town manager needs to approve the designs that the artists come up with. The second thing I want to say is that the Comprehensive Plan Town Hall for District 2 will be on August 17th at 6:00 PM, and the Student Memorial Building in WNMU, and I would love to have a lot of people come and talk about the comprehensive plan. It's an opportunity to have a voice in our future. Another thing that I want to say is that this week, or actually last week in Santa Fe, Airbnb and other peer-to-peer short-term rental lodging offers, people who host guests in their home, but that is a commercial project, had a change where they are required to pay lodger's tax as is appropriate since they're running a business. And I want to say that there's been some research going on in our town. We've developed some databases about the number of Airbnb and vacation rental by owner offerings in our town. It's substantial. It's about proportional to the population in Santa Fe. Santa Fe's got about 100,000 people in the area. We have about 10,000. We've got a proportional amount there, about 60 unique Airbnb offerings. And we'll be working, the staff will be working, and perhaps there'll be some awareness changes to bring those folks into the fold and get them engaged in the common good with their small businesses. I am a strong proponent of small businesses. I've run a number myself, but it's really good to get those businesses aligned with the needs of the greater community. So that's just a little foreshadowing of something to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank our code enforcement, Julie Salas. Okay. And they went out and examined the area up on, I always want to say, is it Rusa Major? I always get Rusa Major, Rusa Moner turned around. And 20th, and we also had Bud Malaney go out along with Eddie Vindosso to look for standing pools where mosquitoes were breeding. So first of all, let's get back to our code enforcement. There was, at that point, when they went out to examine it on Monday, there was no trash. It was well kept. The berms were there that had been put in place by the fowlers. We can't put up fences on private property. We really can't do things on private property. So right now, it looks like everything is working as it is. There's no trash being left behind. There's no illegal dumping. There was quite clean up there, I believe, when they checked on Monday. And all a citizen has to do is report illegal dumping, if it's anywhere on a town property, and they can report it to code enforcement, and that will be taken care of. So I don't want people to think that we only go, they do go up and they do check. I know that the chief checked and had patrols up there when there was a lot of things like that going on, but it seems to have calmed down. The other thing I wanted to mention with what Bud and Eddie did is they found home recreational pools and some water puddles, but there wasn't any mosquito larva activity or anything like that at any of the locations. So I want people to feel, I mean, who knows after the big rain that we had last night, but they don't really come out that quickly. So just make sure that you know that if you are concerned about mosquito breeding or anything like that, standing pools of water, just once again, call code enforcement, right, and they'll check. But right now, there doesn't seem to be any issues with that in the city. So a lot of that water went running down and went rushing down all of our different drainways, drainages that we have throughout town. So I wanted to mention that first. Second, I wanted to mention that the Comprehensive Plan Meeting for District 1 is on August 25th. I'm just checking with Jamie to make sure I'm right. It's at the Silver High School Little Theater, and it's at 6:00 PM. And please call or email Community Development Department if you'd like to attend. We'd like to have as many people there as possible to be engaged in our comprehensive plan. I know that the other council members have had meetings already or will be having them soon, and I just think that as much input as we can get from everyone, please do attend. We'd love to have you there. I feel like I have to say this every time I come, but I really mean it. Stop signs and red stoplights are not suggestions. I can't believe the number of people I see running through all of them. And that's early in the morning, it can be middle of the day, it can be whenever that they think that no one else is coming. Just realize that while you think no one else is coming, there could be someone that pulls out of their driveway and they're there all of a sudden. A child could come running out. Someone on a bicycle could be coming by. Someone on a motorbike could be coming out of their driveway. I just think we really need to realize that, it's interesting, there's a couple of stop signs that I regularly, you know, I stop at on my way to work and on my way home, and if folks think that stop signs are sometimes better, they're not necessarily better, especially in residential areas, because people ignore them. They think that they can, no one's coming, they'll just blast right through them. So I just really caution everyone who's driving, and I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but please realize people are out and about, and you never know when someone comes out of something faster than what you expect, and they're there and you hit them. And so let's just try to make sure we stop and look all the ways that you're supposed to look before you proceed. I too have received a number of phone calls and emails about the stoplight stop sign down at Bullard and Broadway, and I've only received two against the having stop signs. They want the stoplights in. Everybody else that I've received, it's running about 98%, kind of like Councilor Connor mentioned, it's running about 98% to please put the stop signs back and to not have stoplights. They feel that it's calmer. And just a word to the wives, pedestrians do have the right of way in New Mexico. And yes, they should be in a crosswalk, but not everybody does that, especially if they're in the middle of the block. So just, just, just please, you know, our town is not that big, and I can't imagine that some of us have to rush that quickly between things. If you have to rush somewhere, that means it's an emergency, and 911 should be called. I mean, that's just the way I feel about speeding, especially in residential areas in downtown. So that's my two cents on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Wilson. Any other council member have any additional comments? Okay. The next item on the agenda has changed to the agenda. Does the council want to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, no changes. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the July 25th, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Amin Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City of July 25th, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion. Stay there.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
First, I'd like to request that Lucy Whitmarsh, if she could come up and give a report on what they've been doing to look at the handicap accessibility for the SoCo Theater first.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, staff, and the public. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm the executive director of the Silver City Main Street. At our July 12th Town Council meeting, Councilor Connor brought up the fact that in the concession area at the SoCo, we have a step down that makes it difficult for people who have disabilities to manage access from the, from the entry hall of the SoCo Theater into the concession area. And so on July 25th, the board met with the architect for the project and worked up a request for a development of an alternate proposal for that particular step down. And we should have the proposal sometime this week, and then we would need to send it from BICIC to find out how much it would cost to make the changes to the structure. And then we would be happy to review the alternate proposal with council and anyone else who's interested in that. And so that is the purpose that we made so far. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. No, just a comment. Thank you very much for working on this. I very much appreciate it, and to the mayor and Alex, I know you both worked on it diligently. I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Any other reports, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. I just want to let you know that the chip seal project is almost complete. It's probably got a couple more days if we get some clearer weather so they can actually do it. I know that there's been some issues of some plumbers coming back and cutting the street after they've chip sealed it, but Peter's working on something to make sure that the road and everything is sound and is as, it looks the same as the rest of the road as possible after it's patched. The Bicycle Master Plan will be coming to you at the next council meeting. James is almost done with the recommended changes that we looked at. And then I want to let you know the stop sign at Bullard and Broadway, basically, we've decided to put a stop sign there. The only thing that, the things that we're doing right now is we're doing traffic counts, and we're doing, we asked our engineers to make some recommended design changes to put the stop signs in so that it would be a long-term change and see how it works. So, but once I get that information, I will bring it to you so that you can, you know exactly what's going to happen, because I know that's a busy and with all the input, we probably got more input on this one's intersection than we've gotten on almost anything. So that's really good. That's really nice, and I really appreciate it. So it was like 90, 98% are for it and a couple percent against it. So we are going to make the change. We just want to make sure that it's changed right so we don't have any, anything we have to try to come back and fix later on. Okay?
Councilor Beddison?
Alex, can you, I think one of the things that I had an issue with was with the temporary stop sign at one point, it was right, it was so far into the handicap ramp that I couldn't get around it, and I had asked for it to be moved, and Peter was graciously came out and moved it right away. Just that when we do place the stop signs, can we just make sure that they're not in any way going to impact the handicap ramps on any of the sides?
That's the exact reason, not just that, but because we have semis coming into downtown. You know, the sign in the middle, when some, the large trucks came into Cizergee and the delivery trucks came to Alisco, they had to actually physically get out and move that middle stop sign out of the way. So that's why we're really looking at it very closely to try to figure out how we can can set up that stop sign process, so that it doesn't affect the handicap situation, it doesn't affect the large vehicles in that area. So that's why we're taking our time to try to do it right.
Just another question is, have they reviewed the possibility of using the, although I think one side's a little bit, is only a single-story structure, using the structures to, you know, hang something pendent from them, or in the middle? But I think that that one side is only a single-story, I mean, that we're...
Yeah, we, I can't tell you exactly what the engineers have looked at. But, you know, if we do something like that, we're going to have to go into negotiation with the building owners and...
Right, right.
All that type of thing, so that could take a lot longer. So we'll look at everything we possibly can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, Mr. Brown? Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled "The Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1247 and Ordinance for a Request for a Map Amendment/Zone Change for Several Tracks of Land from a Commercial District to the Residential B Mixed Housing Types RB-2." District described as: 1. The west half of Blocks 88, 109, 124, 145, 160, 183, 197, and 213 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City; 2. Lots 14 and 16 of Block 73 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City; 3. Lot 2 of Block 226 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City; 4. Lot 1 of Block 226 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City; 5. Lot 7 in the west half of Lot 9 of Block 198 of the Fraser Survey of the Town of Silver City. The applicant is the Town of Silver City. The Town Council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had any exporté discussions with any persons regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?
Yes, sir.
Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing. You'll enter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony I am about to give in the matter before this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the matter being brought before the council based on the applications or actions taken below. Then the proponent of the application shall present its case. Note that the application and any written decisions rendered below are included in the record of this proceeding. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The proponent, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his or her case in chief, and state that the proponent and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the proponent's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the questions for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Will the applicant please come forward, identify yourself, and proceed to inform the council of the substance of its application?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In this case, the applicant was the Town of Silver City. A couple of residents, including Ms. Smith, who is here tonight, approached the Community Development Department about changing their individual lots in this area. And when we started speaking to the neighbors and went out and did a site visit, it looked more appropriate to do a widespread change instead of individual lots. So that's the way that this case came to the department, and that's why it ended up being a more large-scale change. So this is an amendment to the official zoning map from commercial to residential B mixed housing types RB2. This will actually be our first RB2 zone in the town, because it's contiguous with the existing RB, which is blue on your map. It has the same zoning categories and uses that are permitted, so it'll be contiguous, and it won't be a spot zone. So currently, this property is zoned highway-commercial. It's a broad mix of commercial uses, higher intensity, noise, traffic, lights. Also, banks will not loan people money for a residential loan in this area because it's zoned commercial. They have to get a loan at a commercial rate. The residential B mixed housing types district is low, medium, and moderate density, single-family dwellings, two-family, and multifamily residential development. And you'll notice in the slides, the photos that I've prepared for you that will be coming up, that's the way that this neighborhood has developed naturally anyway. I could not find any commercial use existing. And you'll notice that single-family detached, including multi-section manufactured homes, are not allowed. You can't even get a conditional use for them in the commercial highway district. A big point of discussion has been single-section manufactured homes that are allowed in the RB2. They currently exist in the area, and I've had a lot of discussion about choosing this zoning category. And it's my belief that it's the best decision, because they already exist there. And so we now have the process of a moving permit. If someone wanted to, say, upgrade, they have a 1962 manufactured home, they can now come in and get a moving permit and upgrade that home, and it won't be a nonconforming use anymore. Porches are required, skirting is required, we have requirements from the state to be tied down to the ground. So that's a very rocky area. It's also generally one of the areas where people have chosen to move their manufactured homes already. So that was part of the reasoning for choosing the RB2 district. This, you can probably see it better in your packet than on the television, but the blue zoning is residential B that exists. And you'll see that there's on the left-hand side, a blue spot that already exists. That's the area in your packet that was changed in the 1980s by a resident that just currently still lives there. And you'll notice that Mr. Ortiz requested his zone change to be added to this. He's also in the red, which is commercial. And then the green area on the far side is the historic downtown commercial. Do you have any questions about that map? It's hard to see on the TV.
Councilwoman Edison?
Just a quick, what's that in the upper right-hand corner?
That's residential A.
Thank you.
So this is the northern boundary of the zone change. There's already a creek there, which naturally separates the commercial uses on the other side of the creek from this residential area. This is facing south from that creek. You'll notice that the residential uses start immediately. More residential. You'll also notice the terrain's pretty rocky. There are some older homes there that people aren't, they can't even get a home equity loan for at a residential rate because it's nonconforming. So my hope is that this could spur a little redevelopment in this neighborhood. This is a home that has been fixed up, which they would have to sell for cash if they choose to sell it at a commercial rate. There are already a large amount of single-section manufactured homes in the area. They will now not be nonconforming. They will now be conforming. So it would be easier for, if they wanted to sell the property, for somebody to upgrade it. There are a few empty lots, and this is also an illustration of the natural hillside that creates a barrier from the commercial area that's down on Hudson Highway 90 in this residential Another residential, could be residential lot. These are also pretty small lots for commercial development. So that's one of the reasons that Mr. Ortiz wanted to join the zone change. He really didn't have a commercial use for that small of a lot. This is showing some of the multi-section manufactured housing in the area. So when the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the Town Council, and when the Town Council makes its final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. 1. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. 2. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. 3. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. 4. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. 5. The proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or other further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. 6. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. 7. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. And I might also mention that I ended up reviewing the Brewer Hill Neighborhood Plan from 2002 while we were looking at the Bicycle Master Plan. This zone change was actually called for in that plan. So I wasn't aware of that originally. So it's been something that the town's been looking at since at least 2002. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, and their recommendation is that the text amendment, I'm sorry, map amendment zone change may be approved based on the following findings. 1. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. 2. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of a comprehensive plan. 3. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. 4. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. And 7. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code.
Does the applicant have any further witnesses who wish to testify in favor of your application?
Ms. Smith, relax.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. I'm sorry, I'm Denise Smith, and I'm a resident on Bennett Street. And when I was looking at the property when it was for sale about four years ago, there was a sign on it, on this particular property, saying that it was going through the process of this zone change. Because apparently the former owner had it for sale for well over a year and was not able to sell it, because it would take, a person getting a loan would have to get a commercial rate on that loan. I was able to purchase the property in cash, so I did not have to get a loan. But that is a problem for other folks in the neighborhood who would want to buy property or sell property there. So I did approach the Community Development Department about a zoning change, because I would like to build an accessory dwelling. I have two lots. And under the current zoning, I cannot put an accessory dwelling on this property. So I am in favor of the zoning change for that reason, that personal reason. The, I do believe though, that by doing this zone change, that other properties will have the opportunity to upgrade, and they'll be able to get improvement loans at residential rates, which I think is very important. The area, as you saw in some of the photos, could use some improvements. So I think it would, it would upgrade the status of that particular residential area to have a zone. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to get this testimony.
Does that conclude the applicant's case in chief? Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant or the applicant's witness from members of the council? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Smith helped me understand, informed me, and educated me there. There are actually three Airbnb units in this area. So what effect would that have on home-based businesses?
Well, we look forward to looking at the entire zoning, all of the zoning categories to allow for Airbnbs, because a lot of them are in residential A, where they're completely not allowed. That would definitely be a consideration moving forward. It's something that we'll have to look at with the comprehensive plan review coming up. Land use is one of the categories, and I definitely want to take a close look at the zoning map, and see if it's where we want to be and where we want to go. Because certain uses have come up that nobody had heard of when we originally did the zoning. So Airbnb will definitely be a consideration.
One other question then. So there are other types of home-based businesses where folks find out a fellow themselves is being necessarily commercial. Artist Studios is one. Would this zoning change require that a person at a studio or wanting to build an artist studio do something different?
Did you know what type of medium they use? Sometimes a little metalwork is a little touchier in residential neighborhoods, but painting, people do internet sales out of the house, they're even allowed in residential A. They just have to, they have sign requirements that are lesser than in commercial. Attorneys can have their office in their home, and they just have to see clients by appointment. They have to provide off-street parking. So it still can be facilitated in this.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other questions? Are there, thank you. Are there any witnesses who wish to testify in opposition to the application? Okay, there being none. Is there anything else the applicant wishes to be reflected in the record? That is a no. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connaught?
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
No. No, for criminal ordinance, 1247, an ordinance for a request for a map amendment, zone change for several tracts of land from a commercial district, the residential be mixed housing types, RB2, district as described herein in this public hearing, and further adopting the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission as stated in its decision.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Ammon Smith.
I think the motion is stated.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilor Pedersen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Let the record reflect that there were four ayes. Are there any opposition? Got a question you gotta ask? The ordinance passes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move for a short break, please.
Okay, it is about 10:20. We'll come back at 7 o'clock. Is there a second for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd second that.
Okay, all in favor? I call the meeting of the town council to order. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled, "A Public Hearing for the Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1248, An Ordinance Amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Article III, District Regulations, Section 3.3.2(c), 11b, Accessory Structures of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code." The applicant is the Town of Silver City. The last time we had a council meeting where there were several public hearings, someone came up to me after the meeting and said, "Why do you have to keep reading the same thing over and over when you have a public hearing?" But each public hearing is treated as a separate hearing, so you'll have to bear with it. For the public in attendance tonight, the first part of this next public hearing will be the same as that of the first part of the last public hearing, because each public hearing must be conducted as a completely separate hearing. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had any exporté discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party in this case? Will all the parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Hi, good evening. Do you sound in this room?
If I'm square, refer.
With the testimony I'm about to give?
With the testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the matter being brought before the council based on the application or actions taken below. Then the proponent of the application shall present its case. Note that the application and any written decisions rendered below are included in the record of this proceeding. Next will come witnesses in support of proponent's case. The proponent, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his or her case in chief, and state that the proponent and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the proponent's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the questions for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative, or other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Will the applicant, please come forward, identify yourself, and proceed to inform the council of the substance of its application?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application has also come through the Community Development Department from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Over the last couple of years, they've had several requests for carport variances, and I'll show you a couple of pictures of them. They had debated waiting on the comprehensive plan and land use code changes, but because of the amount of cases they have and the nature of the requests, they wanted to move this forward individually so that it could take effect before we finish all the work on the comprehensive plan. They didn't want to wait that long. So this is T.A. 16-01, Change to the Required 20-Foot Carport Setback Requirement. And also on your ordinance, you'll notice in the therefore section, there's been a minor grammatical change. So the wording was changed to make it a little more clear that we're only speaking to Section B, not A and C. They will remain the same. So the existing text of Section B, which is the only part that will be changed, is "The garage or carport is located at least 20 feet back from the closest edge of the right-of-way of the street that provides access to the garage or carport." What we would propose is, the text will read, "The garage is located at least 20 feet back from the closest edge of the right-of-way of the street that provides access to the garage. The setbacks established in Table 3.4.2 will apply to carports." So in the discussion of this and several of the cases that have come forward, garages are often turned into another bedroom, storage, that kind of thing. So if they're closer to the edge of the right-of-way, that often removes the off-street parking from that lot. But a carport is not often closed in, and they would need a building permit if they were going to. It's much easier to just move all your things into your garage and no longer have off-street parking than it is to convert a carport. It's also easier to back out of your driveway if you're in an unenclosed carport than it is a garage. So this is a photo of a property that requested a variance for a carport. You'll notice that the walls in the property edge, oh, I guess you can't see the mouse on this anymore. It's so narrow, this lot has a really large backyard, but you can't access it by vehicle from the front. So this resident asked to build a carport in their front setback. This is their immediate neighbor, who already had one before the Land Use Code was taken, was written in 2010 and updated. So we were coming into a case of a lot of neighbors couldn't have what their neighbors had simply because the rules had changed. This is a variance request that was denied, and this is what we do not want to encourage. This carport was built into the town right-of-way over the sidewalk. So this is not what we are wanting to encourage, and it will still be against the Land Use Code. So an amendment to the text of the Land Use Code, the same findings are required as the zone change that you previously heard. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, when the town council makes its final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or other further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of this Land Use Code. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this matter, and it is the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission that this text amendment may be approved based on the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policy of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of this Land Use Code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumption on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since the adoption of the Land Use Code. Proposed amendment, seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code. And I might also add that a lot of people have started using their carports for their solar panels, which in the last couple of years has become much more popular than it ever was. So we're seeing that as a continuing trend also. Any questions or slides you'd like to see here?
Councilwoman Edison.
Ms. Ebbin, I need a, I have a question. So when you say setbacks, is that only from the town's right-of-way, making sure it's set back and not in the town's right-of-way, like you showed in the photograph on page six?
So that's where the table 3.4.2 comes in. So we have a setback map that is similar to the zoning map, and they're online and posted in our office. Different neighborhoods have different setback requirements. For instance, the historic districts are often matching setbacks, so a lot of things there are built out to the street. Neighborhoods such as yours are often 20-foot.
Right.
So it's 20 feet anyway. So carports will have to conform to the existing setbacks. People can still come in and request a variance, but it's a little more flexible so that they can match what's already in their neighborhood. Some people, for instance, in 20-foot setback would still have to come in for a variance if they wanted it closer to the right-of-way.
So the question that I have is, in District 1, there's, it occurs every couple blocks where two driveways are next to each other. And one person may have put a pop-up carport, or they may have done an attachment to their home, but the neighbor next to them wants to do something similar. Is that, is that going to be something that would be a variance for those individuals, or would this be covered, even though it'll be 20 feet back?
So there's a 5-foot setback on the sides of the property. So if they wanted to abut their neighbor, they would need to get a variance still. And then they would have to show that it's fire-rated and have the fire marshal sign off, and they still need a variance for that. There's a 5-foot in your neighborhood, 5-foot setback between the properties.
Yeah, sometimes it doesn't, I mean, if you know District 1, and a lot of it was plotted pretty early on, and people are, let's just say, not 5 feet apart.
Right. And that's something that also we can look at when we revise the land use portion of the comprehensive plan. Is that still accurate?
Yeah, it's not a regular thing. It just occurs periodically, and I'm only asking to see what, to make sure that this covers as much as possible.
Yes.
And I think that it does. I just want to ensure that people still know that whether they're going to do a carport or whatnot, they still have to go
Yes.
to Community Development Department to go through the process.
Yes, and 99% of the time, they also need a building permit. So that's also a time for us to review. Currently, we don't have a building official, but we're doing zoning permits with CID, so we still look at their setbacks and their zoning and everything before they receive a building permit.
So I think part of it is just making sure it's as comprehensive as possible to cover as much in it it seems to, because the setbacks vary by neighborhood, as you've mentioned. But also to ensure that people are hearing about this, and they'll hear about it, then they still have to go through the process. This does not alleviate the process that must be done.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilwoman Ammon Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. So I guess one of the things, this is not much of a question, it's a reaffirmation. This proposed amendment is about any kind of accessory structure. It's not just carports, right?
It's just about carports.
If it's just that purpose, what if someone wants to build a solar panel, they want a structure?
So those will still need to conform to the setbacks, and in that section, there are other accessory structures that are listed. So any structure, which is also defined in the Land Use Code, still needs to meet the setbacks. So we're only changing B of that section.
Only B.
And that's it, and it only affects carports. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Thank you. Are there any witnesses who wish to testify in opposition to the application? There being none, is there anything else the applicant wishes to be reflected in the record? That's a no. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ammon Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 1248, an ordinance amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Article III, District Regulations, Sections 332(c), 11(b), Accessory Structures of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code, as described herein in this public hearing, as presented by town staff, and adopting the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission as stated in its decision.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is stated.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
A roll call, please, Yolanda.
You can give the microphone, Yolanda.
Councilwoman Ammon Smith.
Aye.
Councilor Ray.
Aye.
Councilor Connell.
Aye.
Councilor Edison.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous in favor of the ordinance that therefore passes. This public hearing is concluded, and there will be a written decision on both of these hearings that will be forthcoming. The next item on the agenda that requires action is new business. Item 11a under new business is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-19, a resolution adopting the 2018-2022 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, known as ICIP. Mr. Brown?
Jamie will go ahead. She's done most of the work on this, so I'll let her present it.
I have another slideshow. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a lot different than it has been in past years. The process has changed, the requirements have changed, and the opportunity for input is much less. So this is a slideshow that we put on the town website, and it just gives you a little idea for the public who are watching what the ICIP is. So it's Infrastructure and Capital Improvement is a plan that establishes planning priorities for anticipated capital projects. It is state-coordinated, it prevents municipalities from, tribal governments, water associations from finding themselves in emergency situations. It's a planning document, that's why it ends up being done by the Community Development Department, and it helps you fund development... Department, and it helps you fund, develop, um, infrastructure at a pace that is sustainable. It's also an important tool to use for competitive funding opportunities. I put this on a slide by itself because in our municipality, our town managers does such a good job of planning for infrastructure needs, that our ICIP ends up using, being used as a funding tool more than a planning document. Um, we often have to have an item on the ICIP to receive funding for it. So, infrastructure is basic physical structures and facilities, buildings, roads, and power supplies needed for the operation of a society or enterprise. This year, all capital projects on the ICIP should be over ten thousand dollars and have a life expectancy of seven to ten years. All of the projects should create a new fixed asset or enhance an existing fixed asset. All projects should be ready to proceed. The ICIP is no longer a wish list. So, this is also a change that has come from Governor Martinez. Um, ICIP used to be anything you could think of that you might need in the next five to ten years. Now, these projects should be more shovel-ready. Uh, the details needed for each project are also, uh, much more in-depth. This is, uh, an example of some of the things that have been on the ICIP that have been completed. I know that, uh, residents often ask, well, do any of these projects get done? So, I've added some photos of things that have been on the ICIP that have been completed. This is one of the biggest ones. This has also received capital outlay funding. This is the fields, um, by the golf course that have soccer, baseball, um, intramural fields, uh, riding concession stands. All of these phases have been on the ICIP. This is also a capital purchase that people don't often think of. Um, ambulances here get a lot of miles on them. We have medics who work these trucks, and we were able to purchase some new ones, which were listed on the ICIP through grant funding. So, these are also some things that I don't have photos of that were completed just from last year's list. So, Phase Two, College Avenue Street and Drainage, the bicycle plan, which you'll be hearing, uh, next council meeting, historic waterworks street rehabilitation. A lot of people don't realize there's a lot of work going on inside that building. Uh, Soco Theater, which is now operable, Vista de Plata Utilities and Streets, Cooper Street Sidewalk, which, uh, is really a great thing for El Rico Head Start and the children that walk to school there, and Silver Street Phase Two improvements. Uh, you'll notice that a lot of these are pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, the town's really trying to, um, put a lot of our infrastructure money towards that. So, uh, do you have any questions? You also have a current list of the projects that are on this year's ICIP.
Any questions for the council? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have one question. Um, I think I mentioned during the, when I had a councilor, um, meeting, um, with, uh, you and Alex were present, um, when I talked about the fact that Cactus Street, although promised to have been done several years ago, the funding at that point came in, and it could only go to Twenty Second Street, and that I really wanted to make sure, I mean, there's a lot of sidewalk things throughout Silver City. Um, it's curbs, gutters, sidewalks in that area, and I know those residents are still waiting to have the completion done. Are the sidewalks that are listed under number four gonna be something where Cactus Street will be done?
At this point, uh, the sidewalks that we're looking at right now are, that, that we've got the funding for are the ones that are gonna be in the back streets of downtown.
Right.
Uh, the design is actually being completed now. We're actually designing, uh, all of the streets of downtown in the back for what needs to be replaced, so later on, when we get future funding, we already have the design. Uh, this next one will go to Thirty Second Street sidewalks, and then the following one will move up to Cactus.
So, that's three years, three more years?
Two more years. We've already got the funding for downtown, so it'd be, uh, Thirty Second and then Cactus.
Okay, 'cause I know Thirty Second is on here separately.
Yeah, that's why it's, this is next year.
Okay. Just, just trying to make sure that something that we had promised would be completed would be completed is, it's really critical, I mean, to the folks that live in that area. I know that we have sidewalks, um, on Uniper and Inyaka that need to be replaced because people fall in, and I know that it happens, I mean, I well know that it is throughout the Silver City, that, you know, sidewalks that were put in during the WPA, some of them are green. They're not, and some of them, uh, may, the town may not have been right to pour concrete, set concrete, and they seem to have a bit of a problem. It's not a, it's not something where you can regularly, you have to go through and you have to walk each street and find out. So, I, I think when we're doing it, it sounds like you're working on at least the planning for the downtown. I know y'all are thinking about other areas as well. I just wanna make sure that, that we continue towards a comprehensive examination of sidewalks throughout all of our districts, throughout all of downtown.
The paving master plan has done that.
Okay.
Uh, we do need to do an update to the paving master plan because we've done a lot of work. The Cactus Street sidewalks have all, actually all been designed, we just didn't have the money for construction.
Right, right.
So, that's a shovel-ready project. Uh, the reason for, uh, Thirty Second Street, us working on Thirty Second Street next year is that, uh, we're actually applying for funding to, to work on the street itself. So, we wanna do the street and the sidewalks.
At the same time.
At the same time. So, that's why we're, we're combining multiple funding sources to get one project complete.
'Cause that, that's a, that's a multi-sport material, isn't it?
That's a map, uh, project that we're gonna apply for if under Colonial Security Project next year. And that's the project we're gonna be doing the following year, we're gonna be doing Ridge Road.
Right. The only other thing that, um, I would like us to look at is, on, you know, many of the side streets in District One, like, you know, if you start with, you know, eighteen or nineteenth and go all the way up, there's sidewalks hit and miss, you know? The question becomes is, is it appropriate to put a sidewalk in the missed parts, or should we be doing some sort of a, uh, water catchment and, and working with the folks that live right there to do something where it's a little bit of green space in it? And that, that's something I would, is that part of the plan when you look at?
That needs to be part of the paving master plan because when, when we initially did the paving master plan, it didn't include any type of catchment type of, of, of alternatives that, that could have been included there. So, that will, should be included in this, this time that we do the update of the paving master plan, because that do identify and prioritize the need for sidewalk streets around town. And we've done a considerable amount of work, uh, whether it be through repaving, um, projects like Silver or projects like that, or Chihuahua, uh, or the majority of that works been done, or Chipseal, where we've done quite a bit of, of work. And then we've done quite a bit of sidewalk work, uh, whether it be through capital outlay or our own funds that we've, or cost-share projects that we've done in different neighborhoods.
Right.
And, you know, that stuff is a lot of hit and miss, so we, uh, just like any other plan, it needs to be updated to, to re-identify what needs to be done from here on. And so, we can start working on that. I believe that was like twenty-five thousand to get that done, uh, so the update shouldn't be anywhere close to that, uh, so that can be something that we can start working on.
And the reason why I suggest that maybe looking whether or not sidewalks are appropriate in some of those mysterious, because it's, Silver City's got a lot of hills. And, and, uh, there's been some really gorgeous things that, uh, folks have taken on even before we started doing water catchments and things like that, where they've made beautiful little paths that may join up with a sidewalk, but, you know, it's got, you know, beautiful flowers, and they've done it themselves, you know, maybe with brick or, or other things. And I think that if we, in doing the updates, if we begin to work with, uh, the current, um, owners, I think we can see pathways that were, maybe just putting concrete everywhere may not be what we want, but we wanna make sure that whatever we do do is, uh, accessible. Um, there's a lot of people in my area that walk, a lot of older people, um, that walk in my part of the district. I know they do it in other parts. Uh, a lot of people, a lot of kids in strollers and, you know, whole families going out for evening walks, so I just think it's something to think about when we're not just looking at downtown, but when we're broadening out to our residential areas, to be, to think about the, the larger picture, about whether is concrete appropriate, or is there, like the material that the Forest Service uses, um, where it hardens and it's a pathway that is accessible by wheelchair and by, you know, uh, any, you know, mobility impaired folks. And I think if that's something that might fit in better with certain areas of town, or, you know, with the hills, I just think it's something I'd like us to, to reevaluate when you go to look at that. So, thank you. So, two more years for Cactus Street, potentially. Uh, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. See, Mr. Bell, on this project summary that you have here for fiscal year twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, I see that you have, uh, we see that you have thirteen projects in one year for, for the fiscal year. Is this gonna include all thirteen projects or just some projects that will get funded?
Uh, some of the projects have already been funded, we're just gonna get them completed. Some of them, uh, are, are our priority projects for funding. Uh, most of the, the top thirteen have already had some design work, if not been completed on design work. So, most of the, the top ten projects are, especially the top ten, are already mostly shovel-ready projects. Uh, so, these days, you can't get funded unless it's shovel-ready, most of the time, because the, the state, federal government want to actually see some progress on your project right away, they wanna see some results. Um, so, uh, we've been very successful, I, I think, uh, Jamie showed you the projects that we, we got funding, they're not all completed, but we got funding and they're in the progress of, of moving forward. So, um, you know, we've, we've been real successful in getting between, uh, eight and, I, I think the most we've ever gotten one year was like fourteen or fifteen projects done on the ICIPs. Um, it's just, and usually the top, the top ten are, are those that we're focusing on hard, so, um, uh, we hope to make sure that those get, uh, approved and, and started working. Uh, in fact, uh, we already got funding for Silver Street Phase Three, the final phase down to one eighty. Cooper's completed, this is a block that's being constructed right now, and Soco's completed. The waterworks, uh, should be done pretty soon. Uh, the master plan, uh, will be here next week, and the College Street, uh, we're gonna start construction in the spring. Uh, so, we, we've got the funding for all of those, and, uh, so, you know, that's about four million dollars worth of projects in one year. So, community, our side is getting that much work done, and I think we've been pretty successful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Bedison?
Uh, just to step back to, let's talk about some of it. I know that, uh, one of the things that we do is, you had mentioned, and I wanna make sure that I say it at this meeting, is the fact that we can, uh, do co-op funding, the, the private individual works with the town to get whatever sidewalk that they want done. Uh, it moves a little faster than going through this very long process that we have set up.
Yes, uh, basically, uh, Peter's got two lists. One, well, one list of all the sidewalk projects that have been requested, all the sidewalk projects that are his priorities as well, uh, but then, it, when it comes to actual construction, uh, the priority that, that he has from the paving master plan are the ones we look at, at capital funding or co-op funding or his funding, to, those are the priorities for that. But when private individuals want a piece of sidewalk done in front of their street, and if they're willing to come in and cost-share, uh, pay for the concrete, then, uh, ninety-nine percent of the time, we'll get that project done, kick, done within the year. Those are the projects that can get done very quickly. Uh, but if you're gonna come in and ask us to do the work and, and figure out how to pay for it, uh, then that gets put at the bottom of the list, uh, just like everybody else's unless, um, there's some reason that it, that it needs, if it's a safety issue or if it's part of our priority large project group, is the only way a project like that would move quickly.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that those projects can move much more rapidly if they're willing to cost-share with the town.
And we have a lot of people that do that, so I really appreciate those people that step up to the plate and don't just expect for the town to come in and do everything.
Which then goes to my next point, is that patience is key on something like this because sidewalks, curbs, and gutters and paving are very expensive, incredibly expensive.
And we've got over seventy miles of paved street in the town of Silver City, so, remember, that's, that's a lot of, of paved street that we, I believe the Chipseal projects are around five to seven miles a year, so we're looking at getting to the entire town once every ten years on the Chipseal project. And, uh, as far as getting to the sidewalks, it's gonna take a lot longer than that.
And I also wanted to use this opportunity to remind folks that, um, if the street you live on is currently third, and there's private ownership of that street, the town cannot use...
We can't use public funds, especially grant funds. There's no way we can use grant funds to, to do a project like that. Uh, we can use our own funds, we're not supposed to.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, you know, we would have to get easements right-of-way ownership, uh, to, to do projects like that, and, yeah, most of the time, when the town comes and asks people for an easement, they want money. And then they want us to fix their site, street and sidewalk at the same time. Uh, well, you know, there's a lot of things like that that we face all the time. Um, I faced that, uh, when we were doing Little Walnut, that was a nightmare. Uh, they wanted their street fixed, but they also wanted us to pay them big-time money to, to pay them for the easement to fix their street at the same time. Uh, so, uh, there was a lot of people that didn't get their street fixed because of that, and, uh, that, that happens a, a lot.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Does the council have any other questions?
First of all, I wanna say thank you very much to Jamie for all the work she, that she did on this, you know, with all the public meetings and everything. She's done an excellent job, so I just really appreciate it.
And I want to, uh, I wanna thank you too for all the good projects that we were able to do last year, and I noticed from your, uh, plan that you have really spread the projects over the entire city. So, everybody is having some things done in their neighborhoods, and that's a good thing. I'd also like to, uh, mayor concern by, uh, Councilor Bedison over in the area by Cactus Street, and especially that, at, uh, where the sidewalk normally would be on the south side of Twenty Fifth Street, uh, that goes, what's the street, just, uh, west of, uh, Jennifer?
Uh, west of, mm, Jennifer.
Whatever it is, but there's about three blocks that go all the way to Swan Street, and there's no sidewalk, and it's just dirt. And, uh, I know that doing school, especially if it rains, that dirt becomes so muddy that kids can't walk in it going to school, so they have to walk out on the street. And I think potentially that's, can be a problem for safety. Any other questions? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash nineteen, a resolution adopting the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, the ICIP.
Hey, we have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash nineteen, a resolution adopting the two thousand eighteen dash two thousand twenty-two Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Roll call, please, Yolanda.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connell?
Aye.
Councilor Bedison?
The, uh, roll call is, uh, is unanimous in the...
The roll call is unanimous in affirmative, so the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1249, adopting a municipal hold harmless gross receipts tax. Before proceeding to the consideration of Notice of Intent 1249, I thought it would be helpful if I gave some background as to why we believe consideration of this action is necessary. In New Mexico, local governments are only allowed to impose taxes that are authorized by the state legislature. This authority to give and withdraw creates risk of unstable revenue sources for the dependent local governments. The term hold harmless gross receipts tax that you may have heard about is one of the examples of the state making changes in what is taxed. In 2004, the state eliminated the tax on food and some medical. Since food and medical taxes historically were a significant and stable source of local government revenue, the state legislature decided to hold local governments harmless from the loss of gross receipt revenue. The state decided to continue distribution to local governments of the revenue from gross receipts tax that would have been collected locally on food and medical. The town of Silver City, along with the other municipalities and the state, relied on the legislature to continue with this plan and so budgeting by these local governments were done accordingly. But in 2013, the state enacted legislation passed phasing out over a 15-year period the hold harmless distribution reimbursement to towns with a population of over 10,000. Silver City with its population of 10,300 was affected. This phasing out began in 2015. Since the state was well aware of the serious negative impacts on municipalities, it had several options. The state could raise taxes to offset the loss of revenue that local governments were going to experience, or it could redistribute other revenue sources at the state's disposal. The state chose either of these two options. Instead, it chose the option of authorizing local governments to enact, to enact a tax up to 3/8 of 1% hold harmless gross receipt tax in increments of 1/8% to offset their losses. Some municipalities acted right away. Silver City did not. The responsible budgeting Silver City planned to not only enact, to not only not enact the 3/8% gross receipts tax, but to do it over a period of time in increments of 1/8% scheduled for 2020, 2023, and 2026. This brings us to today. The state is in a major revenue deficit and must cut expenses or find a new or increased source of revenue. Just about, a little over maybe two hours ago, Governor Martinez issued a press release in which she said she has notified all of those agencies that come directly under her responsibility to begin looking at how they can cut their budgets by 5%, how they can change their hiring practices, and also to look at reducing in-state and out-of-state travel. So, all of these things puts the phase out of the hold harmless distributions as a major expense on the state's general front. Based on information we have been receiving from some legislators and other state officials, we believe that the hold harmless distribution phase out is highly likely to be targeted for elimination and the hold harmless distributions could cease as early as January 1, 2017. This would leave Silver City with an instant $1.7 million cut in our revenue. The notice of intent being considered tonight is necessary so that the town can position itself, so that it can move quickly to enact the hold harmless gross receipts tax if a special session of the legislature results in the elimination of the planned revenues upon which the town created its budget. If that unfortunate action does occur, the town needs to be able to adopt this ordinance, instituting the tax before September 30 of this year in order for it to be effective by January the 1st, 2017. On the other hand, if the feared legislation does not occur, I will not bring this matter back to the council for further consideration or vote. The town is committed to continuing to provide the essential services to its people to ensure that the quality of life and the principles of community are not significantly reduced by circumstances beyond its control. Our actions are based on our understanding of the town's responsibility to secure the well-being of this community. Mr. Brown, I'd like to turn the time over to you.
Mayor, I believe that, you know, we've, just to inform the council, we've been having some discussions. James went to the last Legislative Finance Committee and he's had a lot of discussions with a lot of legislators up there. And there's a, there's a big possibility that if there is a special session, that this may be one of their low-hanging fruit areas where they can take back $157 million and put us in a bind, but it doesn't, it's really never mattered to them much, except in 2004. So, this is why, through discussions with yourself, Councilor Bedison, at the board meeting for the municipal league, through discussions with them, I believe they felt it more was, more of a possibility during the regular session. So, we need to be ready in either case, whether it be during the special session or during the regular session, that it does happen, if it does happen at all. I really hope it doesn't because it puts municipal, municipal governments especially in a very big bind. This equates, the 1.7 million equates to approximately 22% of the total gross receipts taxes that we generate. So, this is a huge amount. When you take 20% of your entire revenue stream, that's a huge cut and all at once in within one year. The phase out at least gave us some time to, to plan and figure out how we're going to offset or plan on how we want to provide services in the future. But this, this doesn't give you any time to do anything other than raise taxes, which has been the approach that the state has taken, is to pass the burden on to us, to raise the taxes. So, with that, you know, the, even though we will raise the gross receipts taxes by 3/8, we still will not generate enough to offset the loss. We're still going to see between a $400,000 and $500,000 loss in revenue on an annual basis. So, the town's going to have to take some, some, we're going to have to cut our budgets no matter what if this happens, whether we pass the tax or not. It's, it depends on how much we want to cut the budget. $500,000 is cutting the library. You know, I'd much rather spread that across all the departments, non-essential services. But we need time to do that. And then cutting it in the middle of the year doesn't give you a lot of time to fix it. So, there's a lot of planning and decision-making that will have to be done, no matter what decisions the state makes. But we're just mitigating as much of the burden as we can at this point and being ready for it.
Any questions of Mr. Brown? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Brown, I think everyone may, well, some people may not realize that I've been kind of like the canary in the coal mine because my first resolution that I ever was passed by the town Silver City Council was in 2010, asking them not to repeal the hold harmless. So, it's, it's been a topic since then. My question to you is, this is for now, Governor Martinez has not indicated when a special session would be called. It will be called by the deadline that we have set of September 30. When, if this doesn't occur in the last minute of the 60-day session like the 2013 omnibus tax bill did, would we have to pass legislation to make sure Silver City isn't cut too deeply? This would be not right now, but I meant, I'm talking about it in the future if this does not come forward at this time.
It has to be 90 days prior to the implementation date. So, if it happens in the regular session and we want it to be imposed July 1 of next year, it would have to be June, May, April, March, the end of March, the last day of March.
So, that still be enough time for us to do something between the end of the session?
Yeah. Yes, so we would have to do what we're doing now. We have to have, pass an NOI enough time ahead so that we can actually pass the ordinance by the end of March.
Okay.
The same thing as now.
Then that begs another question. This current NOI is for right now. If they don't do this and they don't, you know, cut off everything January 1st, there's no special session or it's so late that we can't do anything about it, does this NOI, and it might be questioned for Mr. Scaregon, will the NOI as it stands without us coming to a decision be something that can be brought up and decided upon then in late March of 2017 if necessary?
Technically, probably yes, but I would think it's better practice to do a new NOI reflecting the current circumstances.
Thank you. I just want to state that this truly is something that I've been worried about for a very long time and have heard different things happen over the years. And I do think it will come, if not now, it will happen in the special session. And while supporting this is something that I desperately don't want to do, it's the only way that we can ensure that our town provides the essential services that we always do and at least some of the services that, non-essential services like the library that you mentioned and the museum and things like that, those are all part of the, this culture of this community, it's all part of quality of life of this community. And it's, it's a difficult thing to support something like this, but let's hope that we don't have to do it. I mean, I bet what Pollyanna, I would like to believe that it won't happen, but I also know that the state, as I think both you and the mayor have mentioned, doesn't matter. They, they want what they consider their money, even though this was a municipal tax put in place in the 1960s by municipalities. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Brown?
One last comment. The NOI, Section 6 of the, of the NOI after now therefore being ordained, it has a section for a sunset. We need to take that out because the only way we would sunset this is if the state of New Mexico changed the law.
So, you stay in Section 6?
Yeah, remove Section 6, approve it without Section 6. If you, if you choose to approve.
Is that because of the sunshine?
The sunset, yes, we would. There's no, there would be no reason to sunset it because the only way we would, this tax would go away is if the state fixed the tax system.
Okay.
Because this is our last resort, basically, our, our last...
Last resort.
Last resort, there we go.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Bedison?
I'm going to approve a Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1249, adopting a municipal hold harmless gross receipts tax with the amendment to remove Section 6.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
A second, if that motion is due.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I have some brief comments, and that is, having grown up in Farmington, I know that if you're part of a petroleum-based energy economy, booms are always followed by busts. And up until the sharp drop in oil prices starting two years ago, our state coffers were fairly flush. And the governance has failed to make tough, long-term decisions needed to ensure New Mexico having a diverse portfolio of revenue. Now, this started the Richardson administration when top personal income tax rates were slashed, which has been costing an estimated $500 million in revenue per year. And at the same 2013 legislation where the hold harmless was set to be phased out, the top corporate income tax rate was slashed from 7.2% to 5.9%. And manufacturers were able to apportion profits in a way that is extremely advantageous to them, but costly for the state. When this was done, they sort of like waved it away and said, we'll be fine, we are not fine. The argument for corporate income tax cuts was that they would stimulate the economy and get corporations to create jobs. That did not happen. And according to the Legislative Finance Committee, the bleeding has accelerated far beyond what they thought. So, there's a whammies coming from all sides. The state has depended far too much on petroleum and energy revenue. When that inevitably began to sink, what they had done was slashed their other taps of revenue coming in. Despite clearly being able to calculate out the terrible trouble that's putting this state coffer in, the governor has reiterated no tax increases despite the state's projected $600 million shortfall, thereby putting the burden on us. So, once again, municipalities and Silver City is bearing the brunt of state bad judgment.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a few comments that Councilman Smith's commentary kind of triggered in my head. I want to ensure that everyone in, that's listening to this understands that in 2013, the governor stood before the municipal league and all the municipalities that were in attendance. The room was crowded at the annual municipal day and stated in no uncertain terms that she would never slash or cut the hold harmless. She made that promise, we all relaxed, and then in the last 20, 15 minutes, right around there of the session, all of a sudden, we were in a sort of a free fall of knowing that we had, you know, 15 years, that it would begin to reduce by 6% a year, starting July 1 of 2015. Similar comments have been made by legislators in the past as that we should have been prepared. I'm not sure how one prepares for 22% of the gross receipts tax of your community being lost. There are no additional taxes that can be done, except for the tax that the legislature has provided, the hold harmless gross receipts tax. So, when governor, when the governor said, no new taxes, this tax, the hold harmless gross receipts tax that does not make Silver City whole and additional 10 other communities whole, is the largest tax increase that... whole, is the largest tax increase that we have seen, and I can't remember how many years. And it went, it rolled down to municipalities and to counties. So I think you can see I'm pretty passionate about this, that this is something that disturbs me greatly, and the decision to go forward with something like this, knowing that we can not do the effective, or not approve this if, if it's okay, at least for the, through a special session. But knowing that it may come again in January, February, or March, is something that is difficult to, to really be able to get my head around, because like the rest of us over the years, I do not like raising taxes. But if the only way this community can survive and ensure that it provides the essential services and the non-essential services that make the quality of life in Silver City the way it is, then we do, I do have to consider voting in favor of this, and I just want to make that statement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Cities that implemented that 3/8% tax already have incorporated that into their budget, unlike Silver City, who now does at least have the option to implement that in steps of 1/8%. So thanks to the foresight of our city administration, we're not quite as bad off as some of the other municipalities would be. Any other discussion? Do I hear, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Mr. Scavron? You look like you want to say something.
We don't need the roll call, I didn't hear the, the motion read, and I, did everybody vote?
Yeah.
Can we do a roll call?
No, you don't need the roll call for the NOI.
Okay, let's, let's do a roll call, so it'll be on the record for each counselor. Yolanda, roll call, please.
Councilor Benson.
Aye.
Councilor Amundson.
Aye.
Councilor Ray.
Aye.
Councilor Kano.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is 11C, Appointment to the Library Board. The town has received one application from Judy Brown Lawson to fill one opening on the library board. The chair of the library board, Ted Lynn, and the library director, Eileen Sullivan, recommends this appointment. I would like to appoint Judy Brown Lawson to the library board. Does the council have any objections?
No.
Hearing no objections, I do hereby appoint Judy Brown Lawson to the library board. This concludes the business of the Silver City Town Council. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
I will.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.